I'm going over this budget.
Nice.
Got them all in two. There's a. Oh, yeah. Now, what wasn't in the update was the new rich, but wasn't not in the update was the new.
Taxation.
Taxation is the same as what?
Yeah, it was just the review.
The healthcare that we do is.
Let's see that we're going over it tonight.
Roberts, we get the back.
Oh, there it is. I had to step away for a second. Our dog is manning asparagus.
I don't know. It didn't sound good though. All right. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our April 26th. All stand for budget allegiance and silence of our men and women.
Flag in the United States of America. For which it stands, one nation under.
Thank you all. All right, let's begin with our.
I think you're muted, Linda. She's very animated, though.
Thank you. There with us. Megan there. We'll get to this.
As they say, we're experiencing technical difficulties.
How about now?
Yes.
We got to, Linda, but we got something on our end.
Okay, sorry, I am present.
Ms. Abbott?
Yeah.
I'm here.
Hamilton?
Here.
Dr. Ryan?
Here.
Here. Just a little housekeeping. For those of you who are participating from home on the Zoom, there's the icons you indicate. If you're calling in, you have the ability to star nine will indicate you have a question. Star six will allow you to mute and unmute your phone. When called upon, please provide your payment address for the download. And I'd like to begin with the President's Executive Summary. We did not have executive session tonight. But if you recall, at our prior meeting on March 22nd, we did have an executive session. The session was in regards to potential litigation under Rhode Island General Law 4246-582. We went into recess about 7:00 PM and then reconvened following our regular agenda upon conclusion during session. One vote was taken and I did report that when we re. I realized that. It wasn't minutes from that meeting, but I was reporting it out at tonight's meeting. I told him I would do it, so I've done it. I'm just gonna give one of our counselors a second here. He's trying to chime in.
Mr. President, did you get a note from Mr. Hamilton? He says he's trying to get in, but the. He doesn't have the panelist link and he can't get in otherwise. So I will forward him the panelist link.
We're in a little bit of limbo here at the moment. What's on your screen? I had my display setting. Is that what's on your screen?
That is not on my screen.
Is it your display settings that are on your screen?
Well, that's a could be I'm having a problem controlling my house. I don't know if somebody did something in here before we.
I'm here. Thank you, Mr. Budmaier.
You're welcome, Mr. Hamilton. That's the extent of my IT abilities, so do not push it beyond that.
Reporting email works fine.
Yes, and that's the extent.
We were having a little problem here.
They claim they couldn't hear you, Kevin.
What's that? You can't hear me?
No, we could not understand one word of the President's Executive Summary.
I think I got time to restate it. My executive summary was in regards to our prior meeting on March 22nd. We had executive session under Rhode Island General Law 4246-582, potential litigation. Our executive session went into recess at 7:00 o'clock and we reconvened on conclusion of our regular business. We resumed at 8:44 during executive session. One vote was taken and I did report that out upon returning to executive session. But we no longer being videoed, so I was just reporting it out. We did get asked that at the last meeting, so I'm just reporting out executive session.
I'll let you know. If Mrs. Greif heard that, then I'll let you know.
The three times could be the charm.
If she can type in a thumbs up in the questions, that'd be good.
What do you see on your screen?
I got the agenda.
I have the agenda.
All right, we got the agenda. We don't have it up on the main screen here.
Wing it.
I mean, I think we can go.
Did we take a vote in executive session? What did you just report out on? I don't even remember.
We just, it was just, I was just reporting out that one vote was taken. That's all. During the executive session, one vote was taken. That's all that was reported out.
Okay, thank you.
We're back to the like serpents a lot here.
Excellent reference.
Okay, the agenda is back. It's gone. Yeah, the is being broadcast on our screen. The agenda is up and we will mute. Next, on our presentation and recognition, recognition since the Fair Housing Month proclamation, which I will. Town enforcement proclamation, whereas. This April is the 53rd anniversary of the Fair Housing Act in which US law was established that prohibited discrimination in housing. Whereas, Lieutenant Secretary Marsha L. Fudge states that Fair Housing Month is a time to recommit our nation's obligations to ensure that everyone has equal access to safe, affordable housing. Whereas, Town Enforcement has a grantee of Community Development Block Grant, CDVG funds, that's obligated by the CDVG program to prepare and implement a plan of action to permanently further fair housing for each CDVG program year. And whereas, Town Enforcement has a longstanding issue of supporting efforts to affirmatively further fair housing. And whereas, Town Enforcement acknowledges and supports the housing hotline and the Community Housing Resource Board. Resource Boards work with the people of the community to resolve housing concerns and find warmth and shelter in whichever way one may seek. And whereas, the global pandemic has increased the number of individuals and families experiencing overwhelming stress of housing insecurity. Whereas, each person has the right to a home, to a safe and healthy retreat, free from discrimination. Now, therefore, I, Kevin Aguirre, Town Council President, Town Enforcement, State of Rhode Island, Province Plantation. You're right, April 2021, Fair Housing Month, and the Town Enforcement called upon all residents to make certain to give aid to those who are seeking clean and pleasant surroundings or their lives. In recognition whereof, I, as President of the Port of Town Council, have hereby set my hand and cause the seal of Town Enforcement to be fixed to this 26th day of April in either 2021. Okay. Moving on to our consent agenda.
Move to approve as presented.
Oh, wait a minute.
Mr. President, I request that item B under the consent agenda be moved to the business.
To B?
License B.
Oh, okay.
To B, sorry.
To B.
Move to approve all but item 2B as presented.
All those in favor?
Ms. Abbott?
Hi.
Abbott?
Hi.
Budmaier?
Hi.
Mr. Hamilton?
Hi.
Kelly?
Hi.
Dr. Ryan?
I. Passes seven to zero. Next, we'll be sitting as the Board of License Commissioners. First is a federal license, local food establishment, that's a new for Newport Chowder Company and Hell Street Newport.
Move to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Ms. Jukusa?
Hi.
Abbott?
Hi.
Hi.
Mr. Hamilton?
Hi.
Kelly?
Hi.
Dr. Ryan?
Hi.
Mr. Aguirre?
I. Motion passes seven to zero. And next we have a federal license, annual new Jay Wilder Imports LLC, 1874 part F.
Move to approve. Seconded.
Guys are on the same page tonight. All those in favor?
Ms. Jukusa?
Hi.
Abbott?
Hi.
Mr. Budmaier?
Hi. Hi.
Mr. Kelly?
Hi.
Dr. Ryan?
Hi.
I. Motion passes seven to zero.
Motion to adjourn as a Board of License Commissioners. Mark in the middle of a swallow there, so.
Favor?
Ms. Jukusa?
Hi.
Ms. Abbott?
Hi.
Budmaier?
Hi.
Mr. Hamilton?
Hi.
Kelly?
Hi.
Dr. Ryan?
Hi.
Mr. Aguirre?
I. Next, we have minutes from our town council meeting on April 12.
Move to approve as presented.
Second.
All those in favor?
Ms. Jukusa?
Hi.
Abbott?
Hi.
Budmaier?
Hi.
Mr. Hamilton?
Hi.
Kelly?
Hi.
Dr. Ryan?
Hi.
Mr. Aguirre?
I. Passes seven to zero. To our town administrators report, Mr. Ryan.
Mr. President, Town Council, ladies and gentlemen. With respect to COVID, all Rhode Islanders age 16 and above may now register for vaccines. People can register at the portal ri.gov website. More information about vaccines, including information about the Johnson and Johnson vaccine clause, is available at our website and via the covidri.gov website. Beginning Friday, May 7th, the indoor capacity limit for restaurants, stores, and other businesses and services will increase to 80%. Then, on May 28th, the capacity limit will be lifted completely along with a limit on social gatherings. Additionally, there will no longer be a cap on the number of people per table at restaurants. When in public, wearing a mask will continue to be a requirement while indoors. However, on May 7th, masks will go from being required to being recommended when outdoors, as long as there's at least three feet of space between individuals. And more COVID information is available at the town's website. It's my pleasure to announce that Portsmouth has again been named a Tree City USA by the Arbor Day Foundation in honor of our commitment to effective urban forest management. The Arbor Day Foundation is a million number nonprofit conservative, our conservation and education organization with a mission to inspire people to plant, nurture, and celebrate trees. More information is available at arborday.org. I'd like to congratulate our Public Works Department, our Tree Commission, and Tree Wardens for their hard work in ensuring that Portsmouth remains a safe and safe city. And with regard to SNAP, the SNAP network Climate Resiliency Planning and Financing Project kicked off on the 15th. The working group will convene every three weeks, except July and August, until the end of next November, after which we will present to you, Town Council, a Portsmouth-specific, resiliency-focused capital improvement plan created review. And that concludes my report, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Ryan. Okay, on to resignations and appointments. First, we have the reappointment, the Brussels Berry Town Council Committee for Abigail Brown.
Move to approve.
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Ms. Jukusa?
Hi.
Ms. Abbott?
Hi.
Budmaier?
Hi.
Hamilton?
Hi.
Kelly?
Hi.
Dr. Ryan?
Hi.
Mr. Aguirre?
I. Motion passes seven to zero. Moving on to new business, new business number one. I'm sorry, old business. I was so, just want to plug one more button. I'm sorry, this last one.
The month of March, the town is 75% through its current fiscal year. The total general fund revenues are higher than prior year, fewer at 76%. The total budget revenues are ahead of budget at 78%. General fund expenditures are 73% of budget expenditures, 2% over prior year, and 2% less than percentage three of precious.
Thank you. Any questions?
Move to receive and place on file with one quick question. Are we looking to be able to finish the year in the black?
Yes.
Thank you.
Please, um, of course, any receiving monthly basis, I have a projection of where we will stay at the end of month and the furthest call to the writing.
I second Mr. Hamilton's motion, since I didn't hear that it was seconded.
Thank you, Mr. Ryan.
All those in favor?
Hi.
Abbott?
Hi.
Budmaier? Mr. Hamilton?
Hi.
Kelly?
Hi.
Dr. Ryan?
Hi.
Mr. Aguirre?
I. Motion passes seven to zero. Now, we move on to our new business. Butts Hill Fort Committee. Court requests for Town Council to reaffirm the 2009 plan. Part 1. I don't see his microphone or anything. I wonder if that's, oh, he's there. But now, now we gotta need to mute it.
Here I am.
There we go.
You all there? Thank you.
Thank you for your patience, Mr. Park. We're having a little difficulty, but thank you.
Well, thank you for the opportunity to discuss our, our, our proposed project with the Butts Hill Fort. We have a few slides we'd like to share with you. If we can pull them up. While we're doing that, I'll just give a, a, um, quick background that. Asked last year, last August, the. The Portsmouth Historical Society, we held a August event meeting and greet and informational session. Jim Garman gave a citation on the fort's history to, uh, just a nice outdoor event we had in August 28th. And, um, we had a very good showing at, at the, at the August 28th meeting. And we formed about 30 people signed up to help participate and, um, help with future endeavors at the fort. And as a result of that, the Historical Society decided to form a, a committee to help restore the, the fort back to, well, so I won't say back to original, original construction, but to raise awareness and to bring it back to a, what it deserves, a usable site. So the committee is chaired by myself, I'm the Vice President of Portsmouth Historical Society, and Mr. Joe Studluck, who's also present on the, um, in the meeting. So if you go to the next slide, please. So we quickly just want to, we, right now, we have a mission as, as what we're doing for the upcoming 2026 and 2028 anniversaries of the Revolutionary War and the Battle of Rhode Island. And we briefly what our goals are moving forward and just trying to get some, get you all on board and hopefully some approvals, just to basically recognize our initiative to reaffirm what has happened in the past. Sort of get your blessing at this point, move forward in the right direction. Next slide. Um, right now, we're working group, a working committee of 10 individuals. We have graphic designers, historians on our board. We have a very good working committee that we're very, very proud of. Our, our overall goal to awareness of the treasure that we have at Butts Hill Fort. Go. We're back to the other one. Well, so our mission statement that we just had, yeah. We're, we basically, I'm amazed and I was sort of basically embarrassed as to live the course of life and going to Portsmouth High School and having very little awareness as historical significance of Butts Hill Fort. And, and actually the Battle of Rhode Island. And the more I've been involved, Historical Society, and what. Significance of the violent and how it was. And more importantly, Butts Hill Fort, it was a commander for Nathaniel Green and saw the whole. And it, with John Hancock being, you know, pre there, all these little stories I've never, as, since growing up. And there's a big story to tell and it's the skin largest, the largest remaining Revolutionary War facility in Southern New England. And I think it's arguably the largest in New England that no one right now can contradict. So right now, our, our, our goals are to raise this. We're seeking funds from individuals, corporations, governments, preservation societies. We want to open up the Butts Hill or the, you know, the high school side first for that overlook. Italian history and for safe educational facility with recreational capability on the site. Next slide, please. Our 2021 goal is very modest. We are coming to you first just to say, hey, here we are. We have formed a committee. We have some nice momentum going our way. We're, again, we have a nice logo that we're working on right now that we want to raise the community awareness of the fort. We have modest goals of $10,000 to $20,000 in raising this, this year. We want to have a project sign available. Again, here's a fort, not just a big pile of dirt. Hopefully clear one acre this coming year. We want to open up from the high school looking up to the fort so we can get the embankments. And again, brings a recognition. So right now, we're, we're just defining, we've only been in existence for really two months right now. We have a good game plan in place and are excited to move forward. Next slide, please. No, no. So there it is. So in 2008, the Rhode Island Marine Archaeological Project funded through the National Park Service. I, I would estimate it had to be a $40,000 plan for the use of Butts, for the restoration and potential uses for Butts Hill Fort. So when I first saw this plan, I said, this is a gold mine as far as we have a working document that we, that we can start with. We don't start from scratch. We have a lot of the historical foundation in place and a lot of the game plan in place to, to hit the ground running, basically. And now, as a result of that plan, Joe Studluck has been very successful. He reached out to the National Park Service and he, I'll let Joe talk about if he, if he has a second, but just basically saying, you know, they were reaching out to us, oh, well, we have some money available. Let's see what we can do. And we actually have $120,000 grant application in right now with the National Park Service. And there's a lot of money coming down the pipe through the National Park Service with, because of the 100th anniversary of the revolution. And, um, so that's very exciting. I think that utilizing this as our, um, as our, as our roadmap is going to save us, I would say, two or three years of time in just overall planning and organizing. And in 2010, the next slide, please. The 2010, the Town Council basically approved. That plan in summary, I don't think it was, it was basically in, in principle, they approved of that overall plan for the usage. for the usage of the, um, of the fort. That plan also included a large museum, which is not part of our scope. But down the road, something of that nature could come up, come in with the right fund. So, uh, the next slide, please. Another exciting news we've had is that, uh, we've been accepted. The Butts Hill Fort is now parts of the Washington Rochambeau Route. Which, if you're not familiar with that, it was a route that Washington and Rochambeau took from Newport to Providence and down to Yorktown. So again, that's a whole nother funding source and there's a whole other funding that's available just for that route with the designation. Uh, we've applied, Joe's applied for funding with the Atlantic Land Trust and the Rhode Island Foundation for some, uh, for some community support. We had some discussions with Chief Peters, Brian Woodhead, John Fitzgerald, and Scott Wheeler. And we have an upcoming meeting on May eighth, if you're interested in attending with, um, I forget who that's with, with the state, uh, state archivist. So, and we've, we've, we've done a good job, I think, of reaching out to all the other groups. One thing that's important to me is that as Nathaniel Green stood at Butts Hill Fort directing the Battle of Rhode Island and overseeing it, you know, we have a lot of other stories to tell as far as the Rhode Island First Regiment and the Hessians grave where they were. There's, there's so many stories to tell and that's where I see that this will be a designation point for people from, from the, from throughout New England to come to Butts Hill Fort, stop, learn about the Battle of Rhode Island, and then venture off into the other subsequent sites. And the last slide. This is a rendering of what the clearing or what the overall plan from two thousand and nine, um, was, was looking at. And our focus right now, again, is on the Battle of Rhode Island Vista, uh, which is next to the, um, the windmill and, uh, the South Battery. So again, at, at this point, we're, we're just really introducing ourselves. We are working within, under the umbrella of the, um, Preservation Society of the Portwood Historical Society, um, for their funding and the five oh one three C. So again, we, we hope, we are hitting the ground running, I think, and, um, just wanted to get your opinion and a blessing on where we're heading and, um, any feedback we can get from you. Questions? Any questions?
I just want to say thank you so much, Craig and Joe, for what you're doing. I did attend, I was lucky enough to attend your ceremony at Fort Butts. When you started pitching the idea of what can happen there, I had no idea there was that beautiful trail and the condition that it's in now and, uh, the fact that you guys have this plan and you're hitting the ground running. Thank you so much. I think it's really great.
Thank you, Linda.
So at, at this point, you're just looking for, uh, the council to, uh, reaffirm or we reapprove the intent for the planning, preservation, and management plans for the Butts Hill Fort, which was, uh, previously approved in two thousand and nine?
Yes.
Motion to reapprove the plan? That was approved in two thousand and nine?
I'll second that and I just want to echo what Linda said. Thank you for taking this on. I think it's a very worthy cause. I've visited Forts But, Fort Butts a few times myself with my kids and I think, um, restoring the fort and, and bringing more attention to it. Can go there and learn more about the Battle of Rhode Island will be, um, amazing for our town and an excellent. You know, it's an incredible resource that we have and a treasure. So thank you.
Thank, thank you.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Questions? All of the baby?
Yes, Mr. Cluska?
Hi.
Abbott?
Hi.
Budheim?
Hi.
Mr. Hamilton?
Hi.
Kelly?
Hi.
Dr. Ryan?
Hi.
Ryan here.
Hi. Motion passes seven to the zero. You're all set, Mr. Clark?
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Greg.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, onto new business item number two, to request allocate American Rescue Funds to create the Shop Portsmouth Campaign. Mr. Hamilton?
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, part of the American Rescue Recovery Act, whatever the heck they call it, American Rescue Plan Act. Too many, uh, acronyms out in this world, in the government world. Uh, part of that, of the funds that the town is to receive is to help get businesses back on their feet. Through that, I thought that if we did a shop Portsmouth campaign to involve signage, advertising, either social media platforms, any way that we can to help drive business to our Portsmouth businesses to help them get their back on their feet would be a good use of the funds that are coming from the federal government and are required as part of the act. So I'd like to earmark fifty thousand dollars of that in order to set up a plan to maybe even potentially set up a retail page on our Portsmouth Town website. So people who go to PortsmouthRI.com can find a way to go to our local businesses, whether it just be through simple links to their businesses, to set up an advertising campaign through East Bay RI or Newport RI or both, or what's up Newport, anything that can help drive people out to Clock Tower Square, out to Island Park, out to the Portsmouth Shop, the Clements, to come back into Portsmouth and do their shopping rather than racing through at sixty miles an hour down West Main Road to Newport. Okay. So my motion would be that we put aside fifty thousand dollars and start up a, uh, advertising campaign to support our local businesses and call it the Shop Portsmouth Campaign. We can also work with, uh, the Newport Chamber of Commerce. It also has a Shop Newport Campaign, but that kind of covers all of Bristol, Barrington, down to Newport, Jamestown, Tiverton, and Little Compton. I would like this to be more specific, just to Portsmouth.
I will second that for discussion and also to add that in the same vein, maybe we should reiterate our town center plan and we, um, we have our request for sidewalks through the, the Clements Portsmouth Shop corridor there because I think all those efforts can really help Portsmouth businesses.
Mr. President, I, I guess I'm not opposed to this per se. However, I don't know what amount of money is available and what the other options are. So my preference would be to maybe table this until we have a better idea of what other options might be for spending the money and, um, have staff come to us with a proposal for, you know, what the, what the pot of money is, what the options are for spending the money. Because I feel like looking at this one suggestion in isolation is really hard because there might be something better. So my recommendation would be to hold the, I, hold this item and allow staff to inform us about what other options are.
Specifically in the act, it states that we have to utilize money to drive just drive people to businesses. It's specific in the American Recovery Act. So you can change the dollar amount, but we have to do something to get people back in our businesses.
Right. I, I guess there are many ways, um, to drive people to businesses. I'm, I'm just not sure that this is the exact correct way. Um, and whether that amount of money that you're recommending is a good amount. Um, again, it's, it's, doesn't have a, it doesn't have, um, other options and
I define other options.
Well, what are, I don't know. That's what I'm saying. I'm saying you're recommending X. And I feel like there are other ways to drive, uh, business, drive, um, drive, uh, people to our Portsmouth businesses. And I want to make sure that we're spending the money wisely. I don't know enough about it, um, especially because there is just this one option and it doesn't feel like there's other options to look at. So that's all I'm saying is that I'm not against it, Keith. I'm just saying that I'd like to have a little bit more context.
Question, um, I think it's a great idea and I think spending fifty thousand dollars to try to help local businesses reuse the funds, but to take, to understand the bigger picture, do we know, one, getting and two, when are we, do we need to decide how to use the money?
I, I didn't hear your, I, I heard number two, it was when we have to decide on it. What was number one?
Do we know how much money we're going to be getting, uh, when we're going to get it and how to use it? Or like, what's the timeline for the, the money?
Right, we're, uh, this is a, was a precursor to some of our budget discussion, but I think Mr. Rayner might be able to just give us a general, general dollar figure and, and a timeline. But we're also, um, as, there are certain, um, requirements for spending the money. And I believe we will be getting some further, uh, clarification on, on the, from the Department of Treasury in, on, uh, on or about a fifth. But as, as Mr. Hamilton stated, there, there's certain things that the money can be used for. And, um, what he is suggesting is one of the avenues for spending that money. Mr. Rayner, can you just give us a brief number?
A brief, I mean, this, it, the president just stated, we're waiting for further guidance from the Department of Treasury. But right now, there's four allowable uses to respond to the pandemic or its negative economic effects. I won't read the entire passage for each one. For premium paid eligible workers, that's the overtime. Uh, for provision of government services to the extent of the reduction in revenue due to pandemic to make up for lost revenue. And to make necessary investments in water, sewer, broad-vanaged destruction. The one thing that it cannot be used for is, for pension funds. So bottom line is we should treat this as a grant. We're looking at, uh, two tranches of eight hundred and, about eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars apiece. The first one should arrive before the end of this fiscal year. Uh, the second one sometime in fiscal year twenty-two. And then money that is going to go to counties in the rest of the country will be distributed to municipalities in Rhode Island because we don't have county governments. So that's another three point three million. So all in all, it's about five million dollars. At the last brief, uh, we've identified, uh, about seven hundred, uh, I'll, I'll, I'll cover in a brief tonight, but we have about six hundred thousand dollars, uh, that will need to distribute to wartime. And then, uh, we've identified a number of projects that we have bounced off of our federal coalition or delegation rather, uh, in the amount of seven hundred and forty-four thousand dollars. That leaves about three point seven million dollars remaining, uh, that would need to be spent. Right now, we're hearing, uh, in the next two to three years.
Short answer is, uh, we have some money, um, that will have specific, uh, you know, it has to connect it back to, uh, the American Rescue Fund program. I, and from what we've heard early on is that there, there is some latitude there. There's certain things you can't apply it for, but there is a lot of latitude, um, you know, to try and reinvest in, in, into, uh, communities. So, um, I, I think that this money would, uh, help our, our businesses. A lot of our businesses did, did take a loss last year. We, we did our part to try to shop locally. Uh, if we could continue to reinforce that, I think it would be a positive message to our, to our businesses within town. I, I do see, uh, Mr. Tuliski and his, so we could reach out to Tuliski.
Greg, can you hear me? Okay?
Got you now.
Okay, uh, the Richard Tuliski, seventy-nine Cromwell Drive, I'm the town's director of business development. I'm also speaking on behalf of the Portsmouth Business Association Board of Directors. Uh, we have, uh, nearly four hundred and fifty taxpaying business towns that contribute at least eleven percent to our tax base. They're very important to us. We get about twenty to thirty thousand cars that pass through Portsmouth every day. We'd like to have some of those cars stop and spend some money. The Portsmouth Business Association has been working on a buy Portsmouth initiative. We think it's very important and they pledge to work with the town staff to make sure we have a quote unquote shovel-ready initiative to, uh, properly invest some of this money that's coming down the pipe. Thank you.
Sounds like it could reinforce some of what the Portsmouth Business Association is working on.
Can be a combination of Portsmouth Business Association and also the Chamber of Commerce and, you know, Newport County Chamber of Commerce is working on, like I said, a shop Newport campaign. But as Mr. Tuliski just mentioned and what I mentioned earlier, we need people to stop and not just fly down East and West Main Road. We need to provide signage, if that's working with the State of Rhode Island and DOT. Hey, you know, there, there are business district signs, but we need to force more people, and I guess not force, attract more people into our commerce areas, whether it be, uh, you know, Kings Grant, downtown into the town center area, down to Island Park, along the East Main Road corridor. We need to stop them from just jumping on twenty-four and getting out of town.
So at this point, um, just trying to, just trying to think through how this would work. Would, would we be looking to just, uh, in your mind, Mr. Hamilton, set up a, just a fifty thou, a fund with fifty thousand dollars that could be utilized? How that gets utilized, we still probably have to work.
Correct. We, we could set this up as a fifty thousand dollar set aside and then work with the business association. Perhaps we even look at hiring a, an actual marketing firm. Uh, I believe the Newport County Chamber of Commerce has marketing firms. I don't know if they're on retainer, but there are marketing firms that they're working with that we may be able to piggyback off of to allow us to set up a, a campaign relatively quickly. Uh, as summertime's coming, we want people to stop and shop as opposed to, like I said, driving straight through. There's a lot of great things that Portsmouth has to offer, but people don't see them because they're flying down West Main Road to get to Newport.
And, uh, just to confirm, Mr. Rayner, we, we would have access to this money now, some of it potentially.
We, like I say, it hasn't, the first trench hasn't arrived yet. We will notify you as soon as it does. I suspect, as I said at the last town council meeting, you know, we could set up a special accounts. That's no problem. As far as spending the money, uh, we really do need to wait for guidance from the Department of Treasury.
So this, this would be a set aside?
If approved, it would be set aside and then we, we would only be able to use it if it met the criteria for, for the, uh, use of the funds. And this does not affect our, this does not affect our play.
No, this does not.
Mr. President, I
Yeah, yes.
I would just recommend that we give our businesses a chance to look at the criteria that are going to be coming down on May fifth and make recommendations to us. Um, I don't, um, say that this might not rise to the top. However, I just feel that we need to allow our business community to look at what the criteria are and submit proposals to us or at least have a conversation with us about how this money should be spent rather than just focusing on this one item, which again, might be the first, the top item somewhere down the line. But it, I don't feel like folks have had a chance to understand what the criteria are and how the money could be used and to allow our community to let us know what they think is really important. And so I would at least, uh, give that opportunity to our businesses to speak up and once they see the criteria, which, you know, are not going to be available till, um, May fifth, is right.
And I mean, that's, that's when it may be released, but it could take, it could take a little bit of time. But, uh, I, I still think it's a good concept here. Uh, and it's just my opinion. I think it's a, it's a good concept.
So why can't we start the conversations with the Portwood Business Association and other businesses to hit the ground running? Why should we wait another two weeks, three weeks, six weeks until we actually get the money before we start those conversations?
Because it's just one idea and
It's, it's, it's not one idea. It's specifically putting, it's putting the money aside to create ideas for the business community.
No, it's talking specifically about a shop Portsmouth campaign. But the tranches that, uh, Mr. Rayner identified are quite broad and I'm not sure what exactly our businesses need. So I would want to talk to our businesses and try to understand what they think this might mean, what they really want. I just don't know. And, um,
I, I can tell you what our businesses want. They want people walking in the door.
Well, you're more omniscient than I, Mr. Hamilton.
All right.
Like we need to have folks to put their two cents in and it doesn't feel like they've had a chance. That's all.
I, I, I appreciate the comments from both counselors. I, I, I appreciate the comments from both councillors. Uh, I would also like to, uh, just, I mean, Mr. Tlitsky did speak on behalf of, uh, the Portsmouth Business Association as well and educated that this, you know, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Tlitsky, I think you, you would be in favor of this as a, as a, as an option for funding?
Yes, absolutely. I'm afraid that if we wait to analyze all the ways we can use this money, we're not going to have a good idea of where to spend it. And the Portsmouth Business Association has been working on a buy Portsmouth campaign for about the past two months. And I think all businesses think that that, among other things, is an important thing to make investments in.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Tlitsky. Okay, so we have a motion to, should we, in a second, or we have a motion?
From Ms. Abbott.
Okay. All right. I don't see any more comments, questions? Okay, all those in favor?
Ms. Ujibuza?
I vote nay.
Ms. Abbott?
Aye.
Bunnery?
Aye.
Hamilton?
Aye.
Helly?
Aye.
Dr. Ryan?
Oops, aye.
Gregor?
Aye.
Motion passes six to one. Thank you all. Okay, new business number three, that's request approval of the Prudence Island Cistern project bid selection. Mr. Rob?
Thank you, Mr. President. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Uh, as you can see from the backup, we have, um, put out a competitive bid, this project to install a second cistern up at the north end of the island, uh, Prudence Island, at the DPW garage. We put out the RFP, we received three bids. One was quite obviously the, uh, the, the response of choice. The other two were nearly double in size. And so we are asking the town council to approve our selection of East Coast Construction as the contractor to install the system.
Move to approve.
Begging it.
Okay, hold on one second, Mr. Rayner.
Uh, just, uh, just to make you aware, uh, the money that we have put aside as the match for this project ended up not being enough. So, uh, there's a difference between what we have set aside for the match and what is going to be required for the match, fifteen thousand eight hundred. Uh, what I did is I had programmed that into the DPW budget. Uh, I'm hoping that that budget will be approved. So I think you should approve this condition upon approval, approval of the DPW budget. I will also figure out where we get that fifty thousand eight hundred.
Could we use some of the American Recovery Act money to cover the extra?
That would qualify as a water project, yes.
Okay. So we can approve this, but, uh, not award the contract till after July first?
The, correct me if I'm wrong, Gary, but I think we're on a tight timeline on this project.
We're on an extremely tight timeline. This project has to be in the ground, invoices sent in to me, reimbursements sent to, um, to CDBG by July thirty-first, uh, uh, of this year. So we are on a very tight timeline for this. If we do not, if we do not get this cistern installed by then, um, we will lose the CDBG funds.
So then either way, we have to start the work before July first?
Oh, we have to start the work tomorrow if we can.
Well, then utilizing money for next, from next year's budget is not going to do us any good if we got to start paying them off now, correct? Or
And if, I mean, the work wouldn't be completed until, um, the next fiscal year. So if necessary, it could come out of the budget. However, uh, if the, if we have the ability to recovery money, American Rescue Funds, um, we'll look into that. And if that's applies, then, uh, then that may be a benefit to us as well. But, uh, at this point, I do see the, uh, the need for this cistern project to move forward. It sounds like we have one or two options on, on the funding. So I think, you know, this is, this is still a viable project and, uh, I would also support this, uh, award. So we have
We, we have, we have a couple of different avenues for funding. We have the Recovery Act, we can budget it for next year. It sounds like we need to get it done in this fiscal year. Based on our financial report, we may have a surplus from this year that we might be able to transfer money within this year's budget to cover this as well. So I think there's a few different options. So I still think we approve it and get it done. And then Mr. Rayner has to just come back with us and say, this is where we're going to take the money from.
Absolutely. Yes. Okay. So, uh, we have a motion in a second. Um, any questions more? All those in favor?
Ms. Ujibuza?
Aye.
Abbott? Bunnery?
Aye.
Hamilton?
Aye.
Helly?
Aye.
Dr. Ryan?
Aye.
Mr. Gregor?
Aye. Motion passes seven to
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Gary.
All right. Uh, next item, it's a request for a public hearing on proposed changes to the Town Code, Chapter one twenty-four, entitled, uh, Burning of Doors. Check in calendar.
So it'll be the May, uh, eleventh?
May eleventh?
You can do May eleventh or you can do the
May twenty-fifth? It's housekeeping also. Thank you. Could we be May twenty-fourth? Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah, May twenty-fourth.
I can't hear you. Can you hear me?
Yes. So, chief, we're looking at, uh, scheduling a public hearing for May twenty-fourth.
Okay.
Do, do we need to schedule a public hearing to change this ordinance?
Yeah, I think so. On advice of the solicitor.
Okay.
So we just need a motion to schedule the meeting for the twenty-fourth.
So move to just, second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Ms. Ujibuza?
Aye.
Abbott?
Aye.
Mr. Bunnery?
Aye.
Hamilton?
Aye.
Helly?
Aye.
Dr. Ryan?
Aye.
Gregor?
Aye. Motion passes seven to
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll see you on the twenty-fourth. Well, right. That's true. We'll see you tomorrow night. Okay.
I think you just let me out of tomorrow night, didn't you?
All right. So on to the presentation and submission for review of town administrators' proposed budget fiscal year July one, twenty-twenty-one to June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-two. Mr. Rayner?
Good evening, Mr. President. I can't see the screen, so if you could just tell me when the cover slide's up.
Well, it's online.
Let me, let me see if I can get it running.
I might be able to sign in on the iPad, which, which
Don't turn audio on. Disconnect's not here.
This is clearly going to be a painful budget season.
Just that new sound system.
It's at, it's at this point that Rod Serling cuts in.
That's right. Okay, Barbara says we're on the cover slide.
Yes.
Okay. Uh, so I'll just say good evening. I'll just make a quick admin note before we start. After the budget was submitted, the town, town administrator proposed budget was submitted to the council, posted late last month. We received the final price of our health and dental care premiums. The costs of those premiums were lower than initially communicated to the town and the school department. Since then, uh, these lower, uh, costs have been, uh, factored into the revised budget proposal, which was posted to our website last week and distributed to the council. So go to the next slide, label budget calendar. Okay, so here's an overview of the remaining budget calendar. Uh, we've scheduled meetings Thursday night as needed. We anticipate that the council will adopt a, adopt a provisional budget on May tenth, but that's not already done at the end of these meetings. A public budget hearing is scheduled for June ninth. And the adoption of the final budget is scheduled for June twenty-eighth, at the June twenty-eighth town council meeting in Jenner. But the slide label budget method. The town administrator proposed budget for fiscal year twenty-two is submitted for review and consideration and has been prepared in accordance with the applicable sections of our town charter. School and town staff have been working together since late last summer to provide a budget that will help you as the town council guide policy and serve to inform residents of the town, of the town's fiscal programs and operations. The construction of this budget is based on conservative financial values for both revenues and expenditures. As always, a balanced budget considers available resources, determines their priority, and then develops a spending plan which addresses priorities within the constraints of resources available. This proposed budget is balanced and supports municipal government focus on providing core services aligned with our town's vision and goals. Next slide, label budget drivers at the top. So we did have some significant budget drivers that we had to address, uh, in this budget. And those do include, uh, a continuation in the drop of state aid, substantial civic support, keeping the budget increase as close to the inflation rate as possible, increases in healthcare costs and required pension payments, a significant increase in hydrant inspection fees, increased road paving foot, increased funding for the Prudence Island Volunteer Fire Department, and continued funding for the Prudence Island School Foundation, and depressed revenues due to the ongoing pandemic's effect on the economy. We will address these budget drivers via a number of strategies. Department budgets have been scrubbed and prioritized. Hires, where, uh, where possible, will be delayed as long as possible. We will maintain a contingency fund. Our capital program will not draw up from the general fund. And we will continue our employee health and safety programs via our partnership with Rhode Island National Trust. And we will take on known debt in this fiscal year. Next slide, please label budget takeaways. And the commitment of the staff remains focused on maintaining the highest levels of services expected by our community. Based on revenue projections and recommended revisions to expenses, I propose expenditures of sixty-nine million, one hundred fifty-four thousand, five hundred and seventy-four dollars in the general fund, which represents a total budget increase of two point eight-five percent or last year, and about a twenty-four cent property tax rate increase from fifteen dollars and seven, fifteen point zero seven three dollars to fifteen point three one dollars per thousand dollars in assessed value. Our balanced budget serves to provide these services to residents that they cannot provide, serves to provide. Our balanced budget serves to provide services to residents that cannot provide for themselves includes funding to maintain buildings, equipment, and infrastructure. This budget supports funding for prioritized capital improvements projects and street paving. It also provides funding for debt service, pension, OPA, pro, uh, as I said, the Prudence Island Volunteer Fire Department and, uh, our school department. Next slide. One, uh, decrease in, so that shows. Okay, uh, we all know that fiscal year nineteen was the high watermark for the town's debt service. Bond debt service will decrease next year by about four hundred and ninety-four thousand dollars. Next slide. Unfortunately, we're seeing further reductions in state aid. So the drop in state aid and housing aid from fiscal year twenty-one to twenty-two totals over one hundred and eighteen thousand dollars. And there's been a drop of one point six million dollars in the last five years. Next slide, labeled revenues. As we all know, taxes are the largest source of revenue for the town. Taxes traditionally account for up to eighty-five percent of our revenues. For this budget, they account for eighty-five point three nine percent. Real estate is assessed at one hundred percent value based on periodic reevaluations, revaluations performed by the tax assessor. Our last full revaluation, which had required every nine years, was conducted in two thousand sixteen seventeen. And the statistical revaluation was just completed last year. In this pie chart, you can see that large green wedge represents our property taxes. And then the sources of revenues are the smaller multicolored wedges up here. Next slide. Here you can see how Portsmouth compares the state averages and revenue sources. On average, Rhode Island municipalities receive more state and federal education aid, aid than Portsmouth and can afford to draw less required revenue from property taxes. Next slide, please. Label expenditures. Here you can see where revenues will be applied. School and public safety account for slightly over eighty percent of our total budgets. That's that large orange wedge and yellow wedge together. All the rest of our spending are those smaller, uh, wedges in the upper left corner of the pie. Next slide, please. Now here you can see how we stack up against other Rhode Island municipalities. With respect to expenditures, Portsmouth is right in line with the rest of the state regarding where we focus our spending. There's almost no difference between us two tribes. Next slide, please. This one's labeled discretionary versus non-discretionary. Okay, most town expenditures are nondiscretionary, meaning we are contractually obligated to commit funding or we are legally obligated to pay out borrowed funds. Three point four percent of the total budget represents discretionary spending by town departments compared to the entire budget. So this is town departments, not school departments. So this is town departments compared to the whole, uh, sixty-nine, sixty-nine million dollar budget. Next slide, please. If we remove school funding and account for only the municipal side of the budget, the discretionary percentage is seven point nine three percent. But even though it's a bigger wedge, it's much, it's a much smaller pie. Next slide, please. So when developing the budget, we take into account all previously mentioned methods and drivers. But in the end, we have to consider the impact on the tax rate and what is allowable under law. These are the metrics we factor into our consideration of the proposed tax rate. In addition to expenditures and non-tax revenues, we have to consider the tax cap, the levy required to balance revenues with expenditures, and how much tax will actually be collected and the assessed property values. Next slide, please. So referencing the tax cap, we are referring to the law which limits allowable revenue growth from local property taxes and limits that to four percent year over year. The amount needed in property taxes referred to as the levy is fifty-seven million, seven hundred forty-seven thousand, four hundred and forty-one dollars, or two point eight-five percent over last year. Next slide, please. So when we're talking about net assessed revenues, our tax revenues come from four primary sources: residential property tax, commercial property tax, tangible property tax, and motor vehicle taxes. The blue graph is Portsmouth, the orange is the rest of the state. You can see that the Portsmouth commercial tax base is relatively small compared to the rest of the state. Additionally, Portsmouth charges the same tax rate for residential, commercial, and tangible property. Hence, our reliance on residential property tax revenue is skewed higher than the rest of the state average. Next slide, please. However, as a percentage of net assessed property values, our total liabilities are lower than most of the state. This is essentially a measure of how long-term obligations relates to our ability to afford these obligations. Next slide. And compared to the rest of the state, Portsmouth ranks in the top five of 39 municipalities with respect to median family income. We're a very wealthy community with relatively low obligations. Next slide, please, one labeled property tax. So to compute the tax rate, we total the net assessed property value of all our properties, which is the gross property value minus property exemptions. We divide that by 1,000, and then we divide that into the levy required to balance the budget. This results in the tax rate for $1,000 in assessed values. For this proposed budget, the tax rate is $15.31 per $1,000 in assessed value, which is 23.7 cents higher than last year, and $643,653 below the tax cap. Next slide, please. For this budget, we are projecting a 97.45% collection rate for residential, commercial, and tangible property, and 93.3% collection rate for motor vehicles. Next slide, please. So when we compare our tax rate relative to inflation, this is a 1.573% increase in the tax rate, which is lower than the 2.6% inflation rate for the 12 months ended in March 2021. Next slide, please. Here is a comparison of our fiscal year 21 tax burden relative to the rest of the state. Our tax rate was 28th lowest relative to the rest of Rhode Island. Our proposed tax rate of $15.31 would still place us in the bottom one-third of the state. Next slide, please. And fourth lowest in towns and cities offering full-service police and fire departments and a fully funded K through 12 school district. Next slide, please. Now, I won't rehash the entire capital discussion, but just as a recap of our capital improvement discussion from the last council meeting, here is the list of capital requests and projects, which totals $1,426,823. Of note, we will address needed town hall upgrades, refurbishments in Glen Park, playground repairs and upgrades, equipment and vehicle replacement, Glen Stables roof repairs, repairs to the bridge to the dock at Glen Manor House, new fire equipment, and a grant match for a replacement fire engine on Prudence Island. Next slide, please. And again, here is how I propose we fund the fiscal year 22 capital improvement plan. As reported in the comprehensive annual financial report, we have a $698,000 surplus in our last audit. This will normally be swept into the fund balance, commonly known as the rainy day fund. We also have $263,000 in our COVID emergency fund and about $200,000 in our fiscal year 21 contingency fund. Additionally, we have received $814,000 in municipal COVID response funds from the state. So this totals $1.977 million. Half of the FY '20 surplus, or $349,000, has already been applied to the fiscal year 12-13 warrant deficit. From the money remaining, I propose that the $1.42 million for the CIP be applied, and then $51,297,000 remains in the contingency fund, and $150,000 be applied as the fund balance. How we fund the CIP without drawing from the general fund. Next slide, please, label American Rescue Plan. So here you can see what we were talking about a little earlier. Portsmouth in municipal allocations is expected to receive $1.7 million, and in our county share, another $3.3 million, so a total of a little over $5 million from the American Rescue Plan. And again, we expect the guidance from Treasury Department to be released early next month. However, we do expect that the allowable uses to be fairly broad. The most important thing to remember is for us not to build a structural deficit with this money. In other words, it should only be used to fund one-time expenditures that do not allocate the town beyond the amount of funds available. And as I stated earlier, this money may not be used in any way to fund pension programs. Next slide, please. The allowable uses, I won't reiterate them, but there's really those four that I had named earlier. We expect that the Treasury Department will give this guidance here pretty soon. And if we go to the next slide. After what we've already discussed, the overtime town hall audiovisual system upgrade, public safety desktop replacement, computer desktop replacements, fire records and dispatching software and equipment, a Lifeline ambulance, a fiber line connection between EPW and fire building, some small emergency management agency upgrades, and a new dispatch council, there's about $3.7 million remaining. We will have, I believe, two to three years to expend the remaining funds. I've listed some possible priorities, but as we've stated before, there's plenty of time to discuss this as the funds become available. Next slide, please. As I highlighted at the last meeting, we do intend to increase the amount of funding to the road paving program. The amount proposed to be spent on the town paving program is on track to help us continue to increase the overall road surface rating for the town. Then last slide, please. So in closing, I'd just like to reiterate that the budget is the most important short-term planning tool at our disposal. It is a plan wherein we establish service priorities for the community and a method to continue providing those services in a fiscally sustainable way. I deeply appreciate the hard work of our staff. I have seen that they are truly committed to excellence in government, and I'm very proud of all of them. Lastly, I want to extend a heartfelt thank you to the school administration committee. The town committees dedicate their time and service to our community, our civic leaders, and our civic leaders for their valuable input and insight. So that is a present as an overview of the budget that we intend to present for the next few nights. If you can pull up the budgets. We'll discuss revenues. So if you can start at page nine of the budget, and tell me when you're done. Okay. So starting on page nine, you'll see the executive summary. Based on revenue projections, as I've stated, I propose expenditures of $69,154,575 from the general fund, which represents a total budget increase of 3.82% over last year. Now, this number is somewhat skewed by the staffing for adequate fire emergency response or SAFER grant. That SAFER grant increases both revenues and expenditures by over $718,955. If we adjust for the SAFER grant, the budget increased by 2.74% over last year. Our anticipated property tax rate is stated as $15.31 per $1,000 in assessed value, which is about 24 cents or 1.573% higher than last year. Highlighted at the top of the page, you can see this budget proposal puts us below the 4% cap at 2.85%. In dollars, again, that means we are $643,653 below the maximum levy on residential, commercial, and tangible property. Now, if you go to page 10. So on page 10, you can see the revenue summary. You can follow along the bottom-line numbers there on the summary pages, or you can track along with me, starting at page 16. So if you'll go to page 16, please. So the tax levy details are listed on pages 16 and 17. On these two pages, you can see how the estimated certification of the 2021 tax rule in each category, the anticipated tax rate for $1,000 assessed value, and the estimated collection rate are factored into computation on projected tax revenues. So if we go to page 18, tax revenue. So on page 18. Are you there? Once you subtract out the allowances for uncollectible taxes and add back in the allowances for prorated taxes, payment and move taxes, and prior-year tax collections, we project net property tax revenue to be $59,49,037. If you go to page 20. State aid. So on page 20, you'll see state aid listed. Last year was intended to be the last year of the implementation of the funding formula that has resulted in the reduction of our state aid over the last 10 years. Unfortunately, for fiscal year 22, school state aid will again decrease by over $169,000 this year. In total, school revenue from state sources will drop by over $45,000 from 1.2%. Will drop by over $45,000 from last year. Overall, due to the motor vehicle payout program, state aid revenue will slightly increase 1.18% for a total of $5,877,763.
You said 763? The 72.
What are you saying?
Five million, five hundred seven.
Yeah, that's XL rounding here.
That's just, that's what's on the screen.
That's right. Thank you. So now, we'll discuss department revenues, which begin on page 21. The first category of revenues we'll discuss are town clerk. Tell me when you're done. Okay, due to the heated housing market, we project a 12.31% increase in town clerk revenue for a total of $848,500. And if you go to plans. Interest income was overbudgeted last year. The realistic expectation of financial revenue for fiscal year 22 is $15,650. If you go to the next tax clerk. We are projecting a slight decrease in penalties and interest income this year resulting in a decrease of 7.72% for an overall projected tax collector revenue of $293,900. Due to an uptick in home renovations and improvements and the resulting required inspections, we are projecting an overall increase in building official revenue by 2.8% for a total of $491,692. Go to the next plan. So in the planning, due to completion of previous year's planned developments, road inspection revenue will not be realized next fiscal year. We project planning revenue to drop by 48.78% to $21,000 in the next fiscal year. Due to increased usage of smart home and alarm systems and the moratorium on good inspections due to COVID, we project police revenue to decrease by 2.46% to $249,800. Under Harvard Master, we are projecting revenue to be up slightly by 8.54% to $108,000 due to an increase in the morning fee revenue. If you want to clarify. We are not projecting any increase in ambulance revenue. Motor vehicle mitigation revenue is part of ambulance revenue, and that was incorporated in that line last year. The fire marshal line is holdover, and there's been no revenue applied to that line for over nine years. We have zeroed out that line. As I stated previous, we received a SAFER grant this year, which will allow us to hire eight additional firefighters. This is a three-year program, and those hires will be tracked in a separate section of the budget. The reimbursement for the cost of these firefighters is reflected here in the fire revenue. This accounts for the apparent growth in the fire revenue of 92.77% to $1,493,955. This reimbursement is offset by the expenditures associated with the firefighters that we hire, as we will show you tomorrow night. Prudence Island Transfer Station. Based on recorded sticker sales, we project $29,303 in revenue from the Prudence Island Transfer Station. As of now, we are still under most of the same COVID guidelines as last year and anticipate little growth in Sandy Point Beach revenue. Fortunately, our recreation director has been hard at work increasing the number of programs which can be offered to the town. There is a great demand for rec programs, which many have tapped into, and we project revenue from recreation program fees, summer camps, and the brown house to increase substantially. All in all, we project a 95.38% increase in recreation revenue for a total of $247,155. So under other revenue, due to increased rental revenue from the town's communication tower, increased bookings at the Glen Manor House, and school funding for the second SRO, we project a 34.26% increase in other revenue for a total of $498,821. So now, if you return to page 11. So we can see the bottom of the totals. Okay, so if you return to page 11, you'll see the total revenue expected and projected of $69,154,575. And we are asking you provisionally approve revenues in the amount of $69,154,575.
I'm moved.
Second.
Timeout. You're provisionally approving, you're not approving.
Right.
Provisionally.
Yep, I'm moving to provisionally approve the amount. $69,154,575 is revenue.
No, hang on, there's questions. Yeah, Mr. Fish Morris has a hand up.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. President. Laura Fitzmorris, Chris Cor. I have three questions, but I don't think I want to interfere with your vote. But I would like to discuss the revenue in general, but in particular, three items on it. I'll defer to you about when you want to do it.
I mean, you've got the, you've got the floor, you've got three questions.
All right, I'll proceed. On page sixteen, the tangible property tax net assessed value increased by thirty-one million dollars or thirty-two point one eight percent. That struck me as a pretty large increase in tangible taxes, especially considering the year that our businesses have had. I would have thought in this year, they would have reduced inventory and anything else they could to the maximum degree. I don't see why we're, we're, I don't see how this works. Could you please explain why we have this big increase in net assessed value for tangible property?
I think the first and best able to handle that one is Matt Helfer.
Hello, this is Matt. Good evening.
Evening, Matt.
That predominantly can be attributed to the national grid power station coming online. That was over twenty-seven million dollars increase in assessed value.
Okay, that answers that one. Thank you. On page seventeen, as we go through the levy, the labeling, the labeling of the table on the top of page sixteen, seventeen appears to be the tax cap calculation, but it's labeled residential dash real property. Is my belief correct?
Yeah, I think that's meant, that should be labeled all real property, I believe.
All right, thank you, sir. Page sixty-eight, which is the SAFER grant hires. Mr. Rayner described all of this in terms of the details of the finances. I will point out that I couldn't find this in anywhere in the revenue pages, but it does reflect, of course, on the expenditure page, which is this, which is now before us on the, on the screen. There, of course, is no funding in prior years, so it's all blank till you get to the twenty-twenty-two proposal. Where did this thing come? Who's giving us the grant?
This is a federal grant, and if you go to page twenty-eight, you'll see where that revenue is brought in under fire.
Okay. So this is, as you say, a federal grant, and is it going to be renewed in the future?
No, this is a three-year grant, which is why we're tracking those eight firefighters separately in our own section of the budget. Once that grant runs out, those firefighters either need to be brought on through attrition or normal hiring, or will have to lay them off.
This sounds a little bit risky if you're a firefighter, is, because or, or as you're a taxpayer, because it's all going to come right back on the tax bill, right? Because I noticed that you reduced Manning in that year by eight. Is that correct?
Oh, that's not correct. We're increasing it.
All right, I'll have to take another look. But it's still, the funding goes away, and that's a lot of money. It's seven hundred and nineteen thousand dollars, and, and this is the expenditure in this year, I take it. And there are three subsequent, two subsequent years of funding at roughly the same level, correct?
Correct.
So that's, that's a big hit on the tax bill if we have to replace those, that funding.
That's, that's why it's separate, that's why it's separated out. These are grant-funded positions, so when the grant goes away, either they're refunded through another grant, or those firefighters will be phased into the proper firefighting budget through attrition, or if we're in excess over strength, those firefighters would have to be either laid off or funded via another means, but if you're, this would be a tax, this would be a burden on a taxpayer. We were, if the taxpayer, we're funding it through the general fund. However, this is money that's being added to the general fund by the federal government for three years, and it's only a three-year program.
Okay, I understand, but one would hope that the firefighters understand this to get hired. Thank you very much. That answers my question. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Fitzmorris. Okay, so we had provisional approval. Motion in the second. All those in favor?
Mr. Jufusa?
Aye.
Ms. Abbott?
Aye.
Budhmar?
Aye.
Aye.
Kelly?
Aye.
Dr. Ryan?
Aye.
Dr. Iyer?
Aye. Motion passes seven to zero.
Tomorrow night, Mr. President.
We have one more.
For scheduling for tomorrow night, so people can plan, we're proposing that we'll do the school department first, followed by civic support, followed by CIP, and then, just as we do other years, we'll hit the big three, police, fire, DPW, and gauge what time that is. If it's still early, then the key points of the budget are not being finished.
Thank you, Ray. All right. Now we are. Back to the others, ladies?
Yes.
Which was.
The reason I asked for this to be placed on the business agenda is because the owner of this business is a close family relative. I'll be recusing myself and submitting my statement of conflict of interest pursuant to RIGO thirty-six dash fourteen dash six to the.
Motion to approve the license for Pete's ice cream.
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Mr. Jufusa?
Aye.
Abbott?
Aye.
Budhmar?
Aye.
Ms. Hamilton?
Aye. Aye, 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 aye.
Dr. Ryan?
Aye.
Ms. Iyer?
Aye. Motion passes six to zero. Okay. On to correspondence.
Motion to receive a place on file.
Second.
All those in favor?
Mr. Jufusa?
Aye.
Ms. Abbott?
Aye.
Budhmar?
Aye.
Ms. Hamilton?
Aye.
Kelly?
Aye.
Ryan?
Aye.
Dr. Iyer?
Aye. Passes seven to zero. Your meetings, we will be right back at it again tomorrow night for budget discussion, followed by Wednesday, the twenty-ninth. Oh, I'm sorry, yes, Wednesday, the twenty-eighth, sorry. Wednesday, the twentieth for continued budget and potentially on Thursday, the twenty-ninth for budget. And then our next regularly scheduled meeting will be on May tenth.
Motion to adjourn?
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Jufusa? Aye.
Abbott?
Aye.
Budhmar?
Aye.
Hamilton?
Aye.
Kelly?
Aye.
Ryan?
Aye.
Ms. Iyer?
Aye. Passes seven to zero. Thank you all. Be back here tomorrow night.
Good night, all.
Good night.